Thanks, seventeen. I got four months to my next deadline. Life is good.
Do you have something to help you relax?
Because of everything I got to do. What do you mean? Oh. Oh. Wine.
What's up, Dee? You doing all right? Give you some color on those things.
I will call the regular scheduled city council meeting of Monday, May the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, quarter at seven PM. Actual meeting to let the record to Detective Hall, Council members of the president who kept the different tunnels and that's a thing that matters will not be attended tonight. City attorney, adjutant, various attorneys, out. Let me forget it this time. I lost the city attorney. We should strike here. The business of the end of the week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Most kind, gracious heavenly Father, we once again come before you asking forgiveness of our many sins. We also give you thanks for the many blessings you bestowed upon each and every one of us, more than we deserve, Father. But you know how to handle the situation. We don't. We shouldn't even question you because you have everything under control. Father, we ask that you be with all of our leaders in the state level, local level, federal level, throughout the world. Father, we know we're in turmoil in certain areas throughout the country, throughout the land. Be with each and every one of them. Father, be with all of our men and women in uniform that protect us, give us the privilege to be here tonight to have this meeting. Father, we ask that you be with each and every one of those family members of those in uniform, protect them in these times of turmoil and uncertainty. Father, we ask that you be with those that are ill, those that are troubled, those that are sick. Lay thy healing hand, thy comforting hand upon them if it be thy will. Father, we ask that you go with each and every family represented here tonight. Take care of them, lead them back to their homes, lead everyone back to the city hall for next meeting this schedule, Father. We ask you many things in thy name. Amen. Call me for the plates, please.
Go ahead, your ladies. We can actually say so, America. This is your honor. What is your stand? One nation under God. And in the rest of the world. We have taken this far.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome all of you tonight to the meeting. We have a fairly lengthy agenda. So when we get to that area of the public comment, I'll give you the guidelines for that and the timeframe for that. One of the best duties of this job is the enter into proclamations, presentations, and I'll ask our Chair of Public Safety, Ms. King, if she'd join me down front along with our Police Chief Miller.
Mayor, Council. We're a little late on the officer of the year. Sir. We're a little late on the officer of the year and the employee of the year. It wasn't, it was picked, but it just wasn't ever announced. Adrian Cordova is our Officer of the Year. He's not here today. He just got back from two months' drill. And the day before, he was supposed to come back to work. He tested positive for COVID. So he's not going to be here. But I do want to recognize him. He's a rising star that's entrusted in the police department's entrusted with training new officers. And before he became a corporal in the field training office. Senior corporal on Alpha Squad and a future leader of the department. Like I said, he's in Army Reserves where he just graduated med school. Corporal Cordova has a leave no one behind attitude and is a great mentor to fellow officers. Now, I'd like to present the employee of the year. It's going to be Kelly Stevens. Kelly's been with the police department since 2006. She started as a shift corporal and then moved to the detective division where she worked several high-profile cases and was an advocate for child victims. She was then, then she was reassigned to the SRO Division where she was at Malden High School. She was a very influential part of her students' lives and still keeps in contact with them. Kelly then retired and came back as a civilian employee where she worked in dispatch and then was moved to property and evidence. She's been a tremendous asset to our officers by helping us get evidence put into the evidence room, also making videos for officers for court and also for us during our investigations. Yes. Okay, our next award is for Officer of the Quarter. This is a new award that we came up during our last staff meeting. There's just a lot of complications going into voting for Officer of the Year. So what we decided to do is come up with an Officer of the Quarter. And those four officers at the end of the year, one of those we picked as Officer of the Year. Officer Roland is our first Officer of the Quarter for 2021. This, this recommendation, it was given by Sergeant in the staff meeting. Nobody, nobody said anything bad about Officer Roland. He's, everybody, it was just hands down. When it was brought up, nobody could come up with anybody else besides Officer Roland. Or Officer of the Quarter. He's been with us a little bit over a year. He started in probation, but he said he felt like something was missing. So he came to Malden. Here, he's been working really well with his squad and all the departments. He's a go-getter. He's a quick volunteer. He quickly volunteers for stuff he doesn't know what he's volunteering for. So, but yes, he's a, he's really a team player. Since the directive was given for more officers to be in the neighborhoods, Officer Roland, he'll go into the neighborhood, park his car and get out and walk in. I've had quite a few communications from people in the community acknowledging Officer Roland for his duty and his job in pushing the community's police. He's a, he's a phenomenal officer. He's going to be a shooting star. Last but not least, we have our Explorer post here tonight. They just attended a Explorer competition in Spartanburg. And I'll let Sergeant McCord explain what all they won. But one of our priorities as a city and a department is to invest in our youth, invest in our youth and our students, youth in the community, youth in our youth camp and our explorers. They're the future. They are, they are our future and will be making decisions for us. So we should invest everything in them to get them prepared for what lies ahead. Our explorers are a great group of youth that are focusing on future in law enforcement. They assist in community events and train every week in law-related scenarios with their instructors from the police department, as well as participate in competitions. Recently, as I said, they attended the competition with their advisors. I'd like to also acknowledge their advisors. Some of them are here tonight. Some of them aren't. Sergeant McCord, Corporal Ross, Patrolman Olvera and Trooper McCord. This year was a little bit different. Normally, y'all know every year we send them to Gatlinburg. They go up, they compete in competitions and we've so far always placed. Well, of course, this year with COVID, we didn't get to go to Gatlinburg. Spartanburg called up one day and said, hey, we're thinking about doing this little thing since we didn't get to go to Gatlinburg this year. Would y'all be interested in participating? We're going to try to get a lot of the Explorer posts from the upstate. And so, of course, we agreed. And they called it the Spartanburg Fun Fest Explorer Competition. It was on May, excuse me, March twenty-seventh. We went into this cold. Our kids had, hadn't been training a lot because of COVID and everything else, but I have to say they showed out because they came in third place in searching and handcuffing, third place in shooting, first place in active shooter, and first place in crisis negotiation. So they, going up against all the other Explorer posts, not knowing what they were even walking into, did extremely well. I am extremely proud of all of them. They were assisted, like Chief Miller said. Corporal Ross went with them, Trooper McCord. He said Sergeant McCord. There is another Sergeant McCord from Woodruff PD, which, you know, there seems to be a correlation here somewhere. But they, Sergeant Laura McCord from Woodruff PD also went with them. She trained them in the hostage negotiations and things of that nature. So we actually get Highway Patrol, Woodruff PD, we get a lot of participation from other agencies as well as our own. But I just want to commend these young folks on what they've done and thank you for the support that y'all have always continued to give us for our youth programs. Congratulations, guys. And I got to get a picture. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next item, I think we have some of our monthly reports available now. Copies out here on the table. So if you'd like to pick one of those up, it tells you a lot of the things that's been going on in the city in Malden over the last month or so. So avail yourself of that as well as our website and whatever. Next item on our agenda tonight is reading approval of minutes from our city council meeting of April the ninth, twenty twenty-one. What's the pleasure of council?
Move for approval.
I have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
I have multiple seconds. Appreciate that. Ms. King and Mr. Black. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sign. Hearing none. They are approved as submitted six zero. Then we also have set of minutes from our special call council meeting of May the sixth, twenty twenty-one. Pleasure of council. Mr. Blacks, is there a second?
Second.
Second with Mr. Matney. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, hearing none, the minutes are approved as submitted. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This section of public comment is reserved for those items that are on our agenda this evening. Tonight's agenda, you know, this will be a little bit different. There'll be three different public comment areas, but this one is our normal agenda item, public comment that any person wishing, wishing to address the council, you fill out the speaker's log and I'll go down it in a moment. You'll be allowed to speak on any manner other than personnel manners or manners under litigation. And one more rule, there, there will be a public comment for the, in the public hearing for the ordinance for our budget. So that public comment will fall into the public hearing. So there'll be no public comment on the agenda item on this line of public comment. That's clear, I'm sure. Okay. So then later on in the agenda, at the very end, we'll also have another public comment period where you're allowed to come up and speak to any item pertaining to the good of the city of Malden. So feel free for that. Because of the agenda tonight, we will limit each comment to three minutes. As far as proper, proper decorum must be observed by members of council, by the speakers, by the audience. The mayor shall keep control of a meeting required of speakers and the audience to refrain from abusive and profane remarks, disruptive outbursts, applause, protest or other conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly conduct of the business of the meeting. Personal attacks on council members, city staff or members of the public are not allowed. It is inappropriate to use a public hearing or the public comment period for the purposes of making political speeches, including threats of political action. Engaging in such conduct and failing to cease with such conduct on the request of the mayor will be grounds for ending a speaker's time at the podium or for removal of any disruptive person from the meeting at the direction of the play. Please direct your comments to the chair of this meet. It is not a question-and-answer session, so there will be no interaction back and forth with council members. If you have a concern, we will note it and it will be referred to staff for follow-up comments. Council is entitled to ask questions of the speaker for clarifications of anything you might have said or commented. So after you finish your comment period, hold for a second and see if council members have a request or a follow-up or a clarification. If not, then of course, you're, you're good to cut. So our first public comment section tonight, those who have spoke up, hopefully I've identified those items that are on our agenda. It is Carol Ball or Bell? Ball, please. If you'll come to the podium, state your name, your address and your topic, and you have three minutes after that.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council. My name is Carol Ball. I live at one twenty-five Dove Haven Drive in Simpsonville. I am in the Cooper's Lake community. I'm here tonight because we felt, I am on the Homeowners Association. I'm vice president. And we felt we were blindsided when it came to the ordinance involving the Center Point Plan Development. We were very excited about what was happening at Bridgeway Station, but where Samsung is, as you know, that road is narrow going in. And we have four schools already on Holland Road. We feel that it's going to be a real inconvenience, number one, for traffic. If you have a charter school there, it's going to be difficult for us to get in. And we felt that we should have had some voice in what was going on there or at least have been informed. And we're disappointed that we weren't. That this was going to happen. Because it is going to be a huge inconvenience for all of us. And I'm here, there are several of us here tonight because we had no idea the school was coming in. And we already put up with the traffic on Holland Road. And the roads are atrocious at best. And the fact that it may change because we are part of Center Point Association. So it may change, you know, our allotment and what we're going to have to spend each year. So we'd kind of like to be involved a little bit or informed as to what is going on and how this is going to affect us and our homes.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions? Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ball. Bill Lang?
Bill Lang. I live at one forty-three Dove Haven, also in Cooper's Lake subdivision. And I was just wondering if signs were ever posted announcing a rezoning on the Samsung property? Because I go down that road, the Holland Road, every day, multiple times during the day, and I have yet to see a sign that indicated that that property was going to be rezoned into a charter school. And I think a charter school is, I'm all for charter schools. I have two grandchildren that are in charter schools, but I think putting another school there, while we have two schools on one side of us, excuse me, and now you're going to have three schools back to back to back. That's going to create awful lot of traffic. Already the traffic on the middle school and the, and the elementary school, they back up on the right-hand lane as well as the center lane. And, you know, it's a chore to get through that area. And now they're going to back up on the Center Point, which is, I guess they changed the name to Bridgeway. Yeah. I mean, so now we're going to have maybe to fight the, the traffic. Bridgeway, yeah. I mean, so now we're going to have maybe to fight the traffic that could possibly be blocking our exit to get out of Cooper's Lake subdivision. So I guess my point is, I think, I don't know if you've ever given thought to the people that they're in the Cooper's Lake subdivision, but that's going to put a burden on us. And I wish that we had given more, had given notice. I just learned of this about four hours ago. And I'm really disappointed that the Greenville County zoning board didn't post rezoning signs out on that property. It used to post it on the newspaper, but there is no newspaper anymore. So if you don't put a sign out on the property, on the property or adjacent to the property, the residents have no idea what's coming at them. So I guess my point is, you know, if you've already had one reading on this, is my understanding. So, you know, we're coming into this late and we probably don't have much of a chance of making a difference in this, but I'm not happy with this proposal that another school is coming into that area, and there is already two. I think it's going to be a great burden on the residents of Cooper Lake subdivision. Thank you.
All we had in this section of public comment. Next item on the agenda is our report from our seat administrator, Mr. Madden.
Mayor, Mayor, members of council, there are two things that I want to touch on from our report. The first item is the Piece of Blues and Jazz Festival that was held earlier this month. The community development team put together a quick snapshot I want to share with council. It's really brief. One moment, pull it up. So this is the first annual PBJ Festival. It was headlined by renowned jazz artist Roosevelt Collier. There was about twenty-five hundred folks in attendance on both days. And it's something that we're looking forward to doing next year. So the second item happened this past weekend. The city held its first Great Malden Cleanup Day. There were about ninety-two participants for that. The folks met here at the sports center, walked down Murray Drive picking up trash, went down Miller and O'Mill, and went down Miller all the way up to Corin. I have a couple photos to show. So this was at the beginning. This was folks from Malden High School. There was a group of students that came and engaged. And also, this is all of the trash that was picked up on just those three streets. So it was eventful, and the recreation department is looking forward to holding these at least a couple times a year. Looking at working with some of the neighborhoods to identify opportunities for us to extend outside of just the major thoroughfares, but into actual neighborhoods. So we're looking forward to it. That concludes my report.
At this point, we will suspend our normal council meeting to go into a public hearing. And this public hearing will be for the following item. Mr. Madden, you want to introduce that to us?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, this public hearing is for the proposed fiscal year twenty-two budget. What's on your agenda is the actual ordinance reading for that. Give a brief presentation to share what's actually in the budget, how it was developed, and one moment, pull it up. So the budget proposed for fiscal year twenty-two totals forty-one point six million. What you have before you hear is a breakdown by the different funds that make up the budget. In developing the budget, staff considered many factors. First and probably the most important factor was the impact of COVID- nineteen. COVID- nineteen has impacted many of our market-driven revenue sources, including hospitality and accommodation taxes. We also looked at some economic factors, the population growth of the city, unemployment rate. We also looked at the end-of-the-year outlook. We projected out how this current fiscal year would end and looked at the amount of revenue we projected to have for the upcoming fiscal year. We wanted to focus on maintaining our current service levels, meaning that we wouldn't have a drop-off or we would cut services out of our service portfolio. Also, we wanted to have a couple items that kind of guided staff as they put the budget together. The first is making sure we were conservative in our projections for expenditures and revenues. We wanted to focus on not increasing the millage rate. Wanted to use our current resources or the available resources. Wanted to make sure that we maintain a healthy fund balance throughout all of our funds, but mainly focusing on the general fund. We use council's mission and goals to make sure each department was focusing on that when putting their budget together. We wanted to identify cost savings that were available through the budget and also wanted to make sure our capital initiatives focused on the city's workforce and the infrastructure. This is a quick summary, generalized by each of the funds. As you can see, the proposed budget for this year, fiscal year twenty-two, is sixteen percent higher than the budget from last year. And that's mainly from the capital outlay that council was voting on tonight. As proposed, the budget is balanced. It serves as a solid expenditure plan for all of our operations. There are no millage, tax, or fee increases being recommended. There are no change in service levels. There is a recommendation to add four new positions, three full-time firefighter positions, and converting a part-time custodial staff into a full-time position. That was a cost-saving measure to no longer use a contract service for that, but actually hire someone full-time to manage that for the city. And also, it includes a ten-year capital plan. The first year focuses on infrastructure improvements, road paving, and sewer improvements. A couple of the noteworthy initiatives from the budget as proposed. The capital projects includes continuing the transition to a fully automated trash service. We're including the purchase of additional side-loading trash trucks. On the employee side, there's an up to three percent merit pay that's being recommended. Also, in the capital program, it includes a three-year replacement for all the city patrol, police patrol fleet. The first year begins in fiscal year twenty-two. Also included is the purchase of two pumper trucks and one aerial ladder truck. Also, funding is appropriated for road paving and sewer system improvements and also the construction of a new fire station. And this is just, again, a summary of the entire budget by fund. And it totals approximately forty-one point six million. So that's a brief summary of the budget. And at this time, Mayor, we can open it up for any comments from the public.
Okay. Thank you. We're now at the public comment, so same guidelines are in place. If you would come to the podium, state your name and address. These public comments are intended to address the budget, the budget and process, and any questions you have will be addressed with follow-up. Anybody would like to speak on the proposed FY twenty-two budget? Hearing none. Counsel, any comments? Hearing none, then the public hearing is closed at approximately seven thirty-two. You, this was a public comment for the budget. You just heard that ordinance. There's another public comment coming. Thank you. So the public hearing portion of this is now closed. And we'll return to our agenda items. Number seven, report from standing committees. If there is any chairperson that likes to speak, finance and policy. Ms. King, anything Mr. Reynolds wanted you to speak about? Thank you. Public safety, Ms. King. And public worries, Mr. Crayley.
Not at this time, thank you.
Economic plan and development, Mr. Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Mr. Broad and everybody in community development as well as all of the departments that supported PB and J. It would not have come together the way that it did were it not for the complete teamwork atmosphere from each and every one of our departments and employees who just kept things humming even when things might not have been as smooth as Mr. Broad would have liked. So congratulations to all and thanks for a great event. Can't wait to see you next year.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Building codes, Ms. Kuzner.
I do have a report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. There were nine hundred and fifty-eight building inspections done in April. There were ten new businesses that opened in April, and there were two hundred and fifty-nine permits pulled in April. So, great job to our BDS department.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Recreation, Mr. Black.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is unfinished businesses ordinances for second and final reading. Ms. Miller.
We just have one ordinance tonight for second and final reading, and that is an ordinance approving a major change to the Center Point Plan Development.
I believe that comes out of BDS, so that's Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance for a major change to the Center Point Plan Development District on second and final reading.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Black. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to change the wording for the Center Point, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries on second reading. That was all the unfinished business second reading we had. We go into new business, first reading, Ms.?
First one we have is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately forty-three acres located at South Carolina Highway four seventeen and Interstate Highway three eighty-five.
Ms. Miller, that comes from BDS also, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning at Highway four seventeen and I three eighty-five on first reading.
We have a motion for Ms. Kuzner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Mattney. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. Ms. Miller.
Second ordinance we have is an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately six point one acres located at Service Bay Road.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning at two fifteen to two fifty-five Service Bay Road on first reading.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion for rezoning of two fifteen to two fifty-five Service Bay Road, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
The third ordinance is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by David M. Adams, senior, et al., and located at Ashmore Bridge Road near Fowler Circle by one hundred percent petition method and to establish a zoning classification of R fifteen residential for said property.
Second. Oh, excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the annexation of the Adams family property at Ashmore Bridge Road and to approve the rezoning on first reading.
And now I'll second it. Mr. Madden, has a second. Hold on. Thank you, Mr. Madden. Any discussion?
I just have a question about road infrastructure because we're going to be adding approximately two hundred and sixty-six detached single-family homes onto an already kind of taxing road. I just didn't know if there was going to be some road infrastructure done eventually.
You're hoping?
I'm sure it's probably DOT.
Good evening, members of council and mayor. I'm David Deere-Hawke, Director of Business and Development Services. And I do know that our staff has been working with some state representatives, state legislature to work towards some improvements on Ashmore Bridge Road. So that's a work in progress. Representative for the applicants here tonight, if you'd like, and she might have a little bit more insight to provide us as well.
Hi, I'm Melanie Giles. I'm with Blue Water Civil Design, representing the applicant. We have not completed a traffic study at this time, but we are in the midst of doing that. So that will definitely help you in your endeavors and try to figure out exactly what we're going to need to do on our end to help any traffic situation. While we're going through this, we're actually working on a bunch of changes to our designs. Can't really say exactly what's going on at this point. But any questions that you might have that I could possibly answer all?
That was all. Thank you so much.
Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion of annexation and rezoning of the Adams family property at Ashmore Bridge Road near Fowler Circle, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item, Ms. Miller.
Next is an ordinance to amend section twenty-one dash four and section twenty-one dash forty-one in the Malden Municipal Code, Chapter twenty-one, Blood Damage Prevention.
Back to you, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance to amend the text as stated on first reading.
Motion to, restate that, a motion to approve?
This ordinance to amend the text as stated on first reading.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Black. Any discussion? Thank you. Everyone's got it. If you don't, there was a change of a date on page sixty-seven. Page sixty-eight had a line added, and sixty-nine is the correct. Page sixty-eight had a line added, and sixty-nine was the correct spelling. Good catch. Okay. You know the comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the amendment to the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries, six zero. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
The last ordinance is an ordinance to provide amended appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2020, and ending June thirtieth, 2021, for ordinary and other city purposes, to provide for a levy of taxes on all city, excuse me, on all taxable property in the city of Malden for all city purposes, including sufficient tax for any principal and interest on outstanding indebtedness maturing in the fiscal year, to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming to the city during the fiscal year.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, for coming out of our finance committee, normally chaired by Mr. Reynolds, who's not here this evening. So, fill in and, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve on first reading the fiscal year end twenty-one, 2021 budget amendment ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Notice I jumped the page. There's the yellow sheet. I got it. Okay, I have a motion and a second from Mr., a motion from Ms. King, and a second from Mr. Mattney. Bear with me. Now, I've got. Motion and a second on the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. Standing committee items, F, Ms. Miller.
We have one standing committee item, and that is a resolution approving the sale and transfer of city property.
That's also coming out of finance, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, just some background on this resolution. This pertains to one of our canine dogs that has been retired, and the transfer of the property is of the canine dog to the former handler of the dog. So with that, I would make a motion for a resolution approving the sale and transfer of city property.
Thank you, Ms. King. And I stated I was coming from finance, that's coming from public safety. Sorry for that. Ms. King chairs that committee. You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Mattney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion for the approval of the resolution, the sale and transfer of city property, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the resolution is approved. We have two, four items that are coming to before us as committee of the whole. Would counsel entertain a motion to consider these in formal method?
Sir, moved.
Okay, I have a motion for informal method to consider agenda items G, H, and I. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. King. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consideration informal method, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, we will consider the following items as the informal method. Ms. Miller.
First one is an ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2021, and ending June thirtieth, 2022, for ordinary and other city purposes.
This is coming out of finance. Back to Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got you confused with all the committees tonight. I'll make a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance of the adoption of the fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two annual operating budget.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Crayling. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion for the adoption of the fiscal year twenty, twenty-one annual operating budget, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, first reading passes for the operating budget. The next item, Ms. Miller.
Next is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to the provision of municipal facility.
Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the, the new fire department that will be constructed in the future. So I will make a motion to approve the ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to the provisions of municipality facilities.
A motion is a second. I have a second, Mr. Crayling. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion authorizing the execution and delivery of documents relating to the provision of the municipal facilities, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries on first reading. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
The last ordinance, an ordinance establishing a sewer pump station fee for additional parcels of the Indigo Point Development, creating a lien for unpaid sewer pump station fees and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That's also finance, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve on first reading the ordinance establishing a sewer pump station fee in Indigo Point neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. King. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Mattney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to get first reading approval to an ordinance establishing sewer pump station fee for additional parcels of the Indigo Point Development, creating a lien for unpaid sewer pump station fees, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries on first reading. Thank you, counsel. That concludes the agenda items. We are now back to public comment. Again, the same rules are in effect, the same time limit. Address your comments to the chair. And this is for anything that you wanted to bring up for the good of the city to your elected leaders. So I'd ask you to come forward to the podium, state your name and your address, and your point. Hey, Vernon, Mr. Vernon? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, committee, participants. My name is Van David Vernon. I live at ten, two, one, six, Three Springs Trail, Greenville, South Carolina, two, nine, six, one, five. I come tonight this evening just to address or introduce myself and my organization. I'm with Vernon Veteran Services. It's a veteran organization designed to help those veterans with PTSD, anxiety, and depression. We do that through recreational therapy. One of the events that we have going on right now is yoga for those veterans. So we got a yoga going on at the Hedo that's over in Greenville off of Rutherford Road. And we do that every Tuesday from six to seven. But I'm also going to be doing for the summer is that we're going to be doing a sipping stretch. So we want to bring that to the city of Malden. And what it's going to do is just allow us to be outdoors, be able to sip and do yoga. So I'm going to bring that to the veterans. So it's open to not just veterans, but veterans, family members, and also any other participants that would like to come. So during this pandemic, we know that it's been a struggle as far as life for all people, and we've been struggling with a lot of things. And just to be able to get out and just do certain things like that and just get our mind back right, and just to be able to get our physical back right, that is what I want. So we are at vbsinc.org. So if any of y'all know veterans or anybody would love to just go to the website and check us out and participate, we'd love to have. So thank you for having us.
Thank you. Four items. Next, signed up, Mr. Kirkland. You'll come to the podium, state your name and your address. Clarification, you're going, you have signed up for four different topics. You're going to address each one of them in the order here. Okay, but the three minutes will apply to each topic.
Would you please lead me which is your first one?
Black Lives Matter.
Yes, sir. I think it was a shame what went on in the city that we're willing to sacrifice Dale Black. See, the Bible teaches we're all created equal, that all lives matter from the moment of conception to God calls us home. So I have a real problem with the Black Lives Matter. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you, sir. Next item was permanent chief position?
Yes, sir. There's a lot of citizens getting concerned. We had to post the position, but we did not have to interview them. And their concern, this man went to the academy, he got his master's, he has served here faithfully, how many years you been here, sir? Twenty-three years. And we're going to read some interviews and some paperwork, and they're going to compete against him and the job he's done since Chief Turner's left. So I need to tell you something about me. I am legally, medically diagnosed, registered in Columbia, South Carolina as a mental patient. And when something happens that I know that's wrong, I get emotionally upset. It's called mental abuse. I've talked to Captain Mike Potdan at SLED today. He knows I'm here. I promised the chief, Dale Black, and Lieutenant Bond I would be a gentleman. And last week, the reason that outburst happened, I waited five years to ask you that question, why did you try to fight me at the door? And I still don't have an answer. You came by my house pretending to be a statesman. I found out you're a politician. Why did you try to fight me at the door? You don't have an answer, we'll move on to the next one.
Okay. Next item is, I can't read, in the parks.
Yeah, the alcohol in the parks. Now, I can't address them directly, but Trey Ubank's, and you and Taff Matley were very instrumental in putting alcohol in the parks. I'm going to do my best, if God gives me breath, to get it out of there. We have no right putting drugs in the presence of our children and make them think it's an acceptable way to live, because drugs are drugs, whether they're liquid or pills. So I have my concerns about it. And I prayed about it, and I think God's going to make some changes here. I really do. That's all I got to say about that one.
Dale Black opposition.
The opposition to Dale Black came through the Black Lives Bill. And it concerned me that three of our councilmen recommended that he step down or resign or whatever. It concerned me that you, being the general, you did not stand up for your right-hand man and say, most of you don't even live in this city. Why are you here? Told him about Black Lives Matter. I've already covered the Black Lives Matter at the beginning. So I come down here this morning, as the chief will verify, to issue over thirty-something warrants. I come to find out four of them have got to be civil litigation in the form against you and the three councilmen I named. And Potdan says the minimum you can sue them for is five thousand. How much you going to sue them? I said, as much as I can get, because I'm going to give it to the children. I don't need the money. Does it make any sense? You don't seem to have much to say tonight, sir. Private Dean Kirkland, RA one, four, nine, three, five, oh. All due. I'm okay. I just finished. I'm through. That was it.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland.
Thank you, too.
That's all that I had that had signed up for public comment. Next item on the agenda is council concerns. Is there any council would like to speak to? Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things, and Mr. Mattney already touched on one of them, but I did want to take a minute to thank everybody that helped with Malden cleanup on Saturday morning, when we, we had almost a hundred people show up at the, at the sports center from family to the Malden High School girls' basketball team, girls' soccer team, Coach Moch and the Malden High School baseball team, several members of city council, the mayor, and all of our departments. Also want to have a special thank you to our interim police chief, Chief Miller, for helping me bring up the rear and stepping in a couple of beds of fire ants. Also want to take a minute to thank Helletts Corner. I'm not going to get too deeply into it, but during last week's gas shortage, this is something that I just found out about a couple of days ago, but they made sure that our public safety vehicles did not have to go without gas. And just, these are two prime examples. When we hear of division within communities, these are two prime examples of our community coming together to support our community, and I just want to say thank you to all. That's it.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To kind of piggyback on what Mr. Mattney said, I'd also like to thank the recreation department staff and all those involved with the cleanup on Saturday. I think this is the first time we've had that many students at one time collaborate to, to work together with our city. So that's what it's all about, community involvement. So thanks to all of those involved in making that happen. The second thing is just a quick reminder to everyone that back in, I think it was around 2017, this council committed and, and decided that we felt like it was that the arts in our community were very important. Moving forward, we're very fortunate to have Tim St. Clair as the director over at the Malden Cultural Center for our youth programs. This past weekend, they wrapped up a fantastic performance of Freaky Friday. So those of y'all who missed it, you really missed out because it was fantastic. So I would encourage everyone to check the calendar of the upcoming performances. Saturday night was at fifty percent capacity, and it was a sellout. So it's the most people that I have seen at one of our performances. So awesome job, and just a shout out to that group and the staff who makes that happen as well. Mr. Broad. Your folks. Yeah, Ms. Kiara. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. King. Just to note, the, and I just lost the name of the one to say it, the Frontage Road down two seventy-six, where MP Husky and all are at.
Old stage.
Old stage coach road. They obviously did a cleanup down through there also, and there must be ten to fourteen bags, different color than ours, but lined up there where they did a lot of pickups. So I don't know if that's, they're waiting on us to pick them up or if they have someone else, but they're lined up down that road. If that's in our city limits and they're expecting us to pick them up, we might want to have our guys look at it down there. And I don't know the jurisdiction. I think it's in the city, but I don't know if they plan to do that or not. Saw them today when I went down through there type of thing. If we look into that, I'd appreciate it. Anything else? Hearing nothing, what's the pleasure of council adjournment? Motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight o'clock. Thank you.